Yeah.
You gotta get have one of the two officers around here be there.
You're going through reality.
I don't need to, I don't need to go there.
Is there? Any of you that would like to, when we're done here? Slide, I could make it my presentation real short. Tony can too. Slide up here to this railroad car and see us. Out of the back.
And then I'll invite, I know what's going on Thursday.
And I mean, and they got a, a one hour video, they've got a, you know, community.
No, we're gonna see that Thursday, right? I think we're gonna see.
I got a meeting at nine.
Yeah. We're gonna see some of that, so if I see that, I'll have, I'll have to show up to them. Okay, good. You gonna, you think tonight?
Where's it at?
It's right up here at Samuel Mania Tech.
Yeah, I get for a bit.
Okay.
We get out of here decent hour. How long we gonna be here till nine?
I don't know. You guys interested too? I mean, this is, are you?
Yeah. Send a railroad car.
We're gonna start the meeting here, Mr. Johnson will be here momentarily, so Chief, would you like to?
Sure, I'll just read off my chart here. I have only statistics to present, and for May, calls for service, fourteen hundred and seventy-three, one hundred and twenty-two offense reports taken, fifty-one arrests, forty-seven accidents, and a hundred and fourteen citations. Almost a carbon copy of the last year. May overtime, not bad, eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one, year-to-date's fifty-five thousand and eighty-eight. And under false alarms, thirty total, and all of them were commercial. And I'll entertain any questions.
Your, your accident total there, forty-seven, I notice it's like higher than the.
Oh, yeah.
Is that because the construction was running or just crazy people driving, or what?
Uh, yeah. You know, most of our accidents are ACDA, sure put a distance, which can be attributed to speed or HUA. Drive thirty straight and I'll pay attention.
Come on, Jeff. You don't know what HUA means?
They agree. What's this?
Well, it's, it's gonna be a secondary offense, and so, you know, it's almost, it's almost. Well, no, I mean, if it's, if it, it's something, it's something chargeable if there's, if it creates an accident. You know, we've always had, in our local ordinance, full-time and attention. It's the same thing, but now it's got another name. But, uh, full-time and attention doesn't require, is not a secondary offense. But now that we have a texting law. It's a secondary, so you have to have a primary reason for pulling them over, except, except for teen, uh, see. Teenagers are the exception, but.
And why not everybody?
I, you'd have to ask the legislators, probably because they do it.
Right.
It's okay.
The one other thing that, before we let you go.
Yeah, still waiting on bids. Uh, both, both companies told us it would take about a month, and it's been about a month, so uh, if I don't have one before our next meeting, I will call and inquire as to why.
The garage out here that's got the three bays, is that gonna be used?
No, I'd like to tear that down.
No way I add on to it.
No.
Maybe, weather permitting, maybe next month, maybe lay out something.
Oh, sure.
Let's do a three D visual, what you'd like to do, do some stakes, or just some, here's where I want here and there.
Yeah.
I think we're all a little puzzled and confused as far as what you'd like to see and what we perceive you'd like to see.
Yeah.
I think.
That's easy. Yeah, then I'll take you inside the barn, exactly why, you don't wanna add on to that.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Just bring you up to speed, went through everything, and just asked a question about the inbound law. Jeff asking, asks Chief if next month, you go.
Weather permitting, it's not raining or something. Let's walk, let's walk outside into this meeting and see what he's got in mind, where he wants to lay his stuff out, if we can stake some stuff out. We can see the buildings and.
This evening?
No. He should have bids by next month. We can put a, put a picture till.
Sure, yeah, sounds good, okay.
Did they do, redo that barn before you arrived, or was that after you?
After.
That was a crooked old barn that they.
And it still is crooked if you look at it.
Couldn't see him spending that kind of money, they got a whole new building up for the cost of what they put in that before.
Yeah, we, we put initially ten thousand dollars into it, just to wire it, put a roof on it, and. Concrete floor, and, well, I remember Jeff Penrose had just built a new shop and paid about the same thing. He made the argument.
Yeah.
I was just happy to have somewhere else to put some things for storage.
I've noticed though, there's Saturday that inbound lot, it's blocked, you know, it's still, you can't, I thought it was more open, it's blocked by trees and.
Yeah, it's.
You'd have to be almost up there to see anybody in there messing around.
Yeah. Well, you know, we put that camera in, and it was a lot of fun the first month or two we had it in there, till the Criminal Network.
Keith was betting those cars off, and I come in and I saw him start to play. Then I walked over and left the bicycles, and I worked it, you know, shoplifting. I must have just got over there. He looked back at me, and I walked up there, he laid down, he'd already got it in my pocket, now I took a combination, stuck it in his pocket, boy, he jerked that. It took off. I thought, wow, oh, oh boy, gonna steal it.
Cheers, Brian, that's okay. Were there any other items coming in?
No, sir.
Wow, okay. We're done with that then, huh? All right, well, thank you, sir. Sorry, I just, just a meeting. If I might add, if something unfortunate ever happens to me and I cease to be alive on this earth, and everybody here likes me not to kind of like, you know, I'm getting in a hurry, because one way or another.
They're gonna be late.
One way or another. All right, Chief Higgins, you're up.
Since he was quick, you want me to talk slow?
Probably whatever you were.
You weren't here yet, but scheduled a, a trip up the road here to the care car.
Yes.
And I'll do a little presentation for you, show you the, the stuff, so, right after we're done here.
Great.
Okay.
Brian, since I don't want to give us an escort.
I can do that.
I want my wife locked up. I just got the call.
Getting groceries.
Better get, have you run us up in the dirt car?
What? It's meat to heat, it's not there.
Well, yeah. Meat to heat there.
Bear taking a ride.
Okay, anyway, good evening, fire report. See, we're up a little bit, about twenty runs over this time last year, EMS, the same way, transports, considered.
Here's one with the numbers.
I just got the, the number recorded at three o'clock. Legislative requests, I do have one, even though it says none, I wasn't gonna waste the extra paper. And all this is, is allow for the disposal of the ice machine that was broken. We've since replaced that. It was ten years old and couldn't wait, but I asked Keith to throw it in the last auction, but he said until, in a proper disposal, because it had a fixed asset and ticket, I don't know, you're ready, so.
You okay?
Yeah. I think you ought to keep it.
Do we have any other questions about the ice machine?
Ah, so anyway. Thank you, monthly reports, and Jeff, tell me if this isn't what you were asking for, and I brought you to pronounce it, and to set me up. Looking for more, is, is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good, as far as comparison, May of two thousand twelve wages, and it was run pretty consistent, about a thousand dollars. Difference between the previous year. Uh, overtime was up, and it's up about seven thousand over this time last year, but we've had a lot more issues this year so far. Uh, under equipment, of course, the ice maker was replaced, that was, you know, we had a price quote of, from the company, it was gonna be a thousand. Right at a thousand to repair the, the ice machine that we paid fourteen hundred for, it was ten years old. And it had leaks in the system, so I wasn't thrilled, thrilled about putting money into an old system. The company that gave us the price quote also quoted a surprise for just a little bit better unit than what we had, and they wanted thirty-five hundred dollars. We went online for twenty-six hundred dollars, we bought one that was much larger capacity storage, but when they delivered it, even though it was an online order, the company that had given us this price quote for thirty-five hundred dollars was the company that ended up delivering it. So Jamie Bun ripped them. Said, boy, this is, this ought to be pretty embarrassing for you, you saved a thousand dollars, and they really couldn't give us an explanation.
Highway robbery?
This was a good charge of that. That company's name was United Refrigerations, and they've done a lot of work for us for stuff, but. And unfortunately, sometimes you see that, you know, just because it's a city, governmental, that little jack price of things. So anyway. Runs are up, overtime's up a little bit, but the ice maker, uh, this has been a bad month for the fire department, and, and just unfortunately goes this way sometimes. The ice maker went, that was a twenty-six hundred dollar investment, but we use it every day, especially during the summer. We carry cooled bottled water and such. The air conditioner, one of, we have three zones, and safety one, one of those went down, and so, instead of putting a whole new condenser for four thousand dollars, I put eighteen hundred dollars in a new compressor and such. Uh, the breathing air CO monitor, it's a six hundred dollar, yeah, just, and I brought quotes or whatever. But it has to be replaced on the breathing air system, it's bad, and so that's something, and then the, um, original generation, and, and those were purchased in two thousand, thermal imager. You know, we bought a used one and reconditioned, but one of the originals went bad, and of course, they don't make that anymore, but it was eight thousand to replace. The unit and to have, rebuild it was seventeen originally, and then I was able to talk them down to thirteen hundred dollars, so, anyway. So it's being repaired now, and we'll come back, but it was an expensive month. Under personnel, Dave Mo's dad, last we talked, he had lung cancer, and he has since passed away, and I think I told you already, I mean, this year, as far as overtime, Steve Gregory is gonna have to have de-surgery, and he's gonna drag that out a little later into the fall. Bob Kozlowski, one of the shift captains, is gonna have to have some dumb surgery repaired, a couple different places, so it's gonna put him out of service for probably a couple months. So, I don't know exactly when that's gonna happen, but his doctors told him, it really, can't say it's work-related, he's not running a workers' comp, but just gonna have to be done here. Uh, under training, I'm sorry. Okay, I always saw, wherever you live, you saw that bed going. Uh, the care cars, we're gonna go up and see here a little bit. We're still training at the Forey Preserve, and since last we met, we had an incident over there, some of you may have heard about, but we had a bicyclist wreck, we, our department was dispatched on a, uh, report to, uh, over, off of Hazel Avenue, and meet the bicyclist, and the details were sketchy, but we had a bicyclist wrecked, kind of in the middle of the preserve. They weren't really sure where they were at, but he was seriously injured with a puncture blow, and wrecked and smashed his, he was wearing a helmet, but it's still. So it took us, the Bulldog was used, the six-by-six, um, but it took a couple hours to get him out of there. We're not flying in Columbus and all, and we since have met with bicycle enthusiasts. And we tried, last week, took John Groff and Eddie and a couple of bicyclists into the Forey Preserve with the intent of GPS and some of the bike trails. Cause you know, that's two hundred acres of hilly terrain and, and ravines and things, and it's a pretty rough country, but we got in there the other day, and there's so much foliage in camp here right now, we couldn't even get the satellite signal. So we're gonna have to wait till later, and the foliage is thinner, and be able to plot that out, I mean, you know, it's great when you got all this fancy equipment, and John's office can do all this stuff, but if you can't get the signal.
And all those ravines, there's much loose shale in there, it's really dangerous.
There's some, there's some real deep. Yeah. Um, so anyway. I guess there's, according to the bicycle club, you know, there's only, I don't know, ten or so people riding right now, but surprising that the amount of trails, and surprised we haven't had more incidences. And it's just ironic that we had trained a couple weeks prior to that on a Wednesday night, just, it seems like anytime we buy new equipment or, or do something like that, something happens, so. Of course, we were stretching wire across the bike trail.
Is that, is that a concern we need to have with accidents in Fort?
You know, that's a concern when you take on properties and things, that's a concern a lot of people don't have, and it's a concern I have, as a, as a fire chief, whatever, because sooner or later, when people use them, they're gonna hurt themselves, they're gonna drop cigarette smoking materials in many cases, and then we've got it in some of these rural terrains, and, and of course, we wrote the grant, and the energy co-op came through, that's how we sold it, and, you know, we were able to purchase that, that vehicle, I mean, because we never get fire apparatus back in any, any way, shape, or form, uh, so, we'll do the best we can with what we've got, but, you know, if people ride your bicycles and things, you know, you don't have dedicated bike paths and things like you do on the other side of the river. It's a preserve and not a, you know, we had a long meeting, and Warren and Jamie Bun, the mayor and I, uh, talked about this at Great Lake. You know, I want to go through and cut trails, and it's like, who's, who's gonna maintain those trails and things? And it's like, because you don't have the staff, the Parks Department doesn't have the manpower to do that. I was down there this last winter, took my chainsaw, and actually cut several logs, so, you know, I've got a Ranger four-wheel drive, side by side, similar to what we've got, yes, sir.
Bobbivard still spend a lot of time there, kind of doing some maintenance?
Um, yeah, the bicycle people do take saws and things, and they maintain that, but I'm just saying that when I went to go into the, kind of the bottom area, there was a couple trees down that blocked me, and I didn't have a chainsaw with me, so, you know, I couldn't get back into places I was there six months ago. So that's just something that when we talk, it, it would be very hard to maintain that, so it's just, um, we are re, or retrofit the Bulldog with some, a little bit different equipment, and, and some things that we may have to cut ourselves a trail as we go in on it, so-called rescue or whatever, but, you know, and I've hauled people out of there years ago, and, and they used to, kids used to set that on fire many moons ago, the bottoms in there, but we haven't had an incident there for years. Yeah, but it's just, um, we've still gotta be prepared to a certain extent. Any way, shape, or whatever hap, Murphy's Law, I guess, but, so anyway, but Tony's got, you know, ATV access, several of us have personally owned, and then we've got the, the six-by-six to back in there if we have to, and we're gonna train, we're gonna do it this week with the care car, of course, but we're gonna spend some more time, now I've got an instructor that teaches ATV and search, rescue, and all that, so, pretty, do a little more training in that area too. Just. Gotta be, you know, you just gotta be trained on just a little bit of everything in our line of work, so, you just never know. Questions on that? Old business.
While we're there, the, the emergency, local emergency planning group that, that meets once a month on Thursdays, I'm on it, representing council, the chiefs on it, so forth. It's amazing at, at how people plan for these emergencies that we've never, you don't think of. And one of the first meetings I went to, uh, they were talking about evacuating Washington DC, and how it affects us here. You never think of that. They'll shut down the interstate, and everybody goes west. And I think, well, it just happens, but he did in Ohio, planned about evacuating Washington DC, and it's, or if Columbus has a problem, and they shut down, and everybody goes, goes east.
And you know, ODOT has got a, a regular plan that we've heard about, where they actually block all the ramps and things, and, and open, open the floodgates, and everybody heads this direction because of wind directions and things, and they don't even give them access to anything until they get about here. And then, you know, people are gonna be looking for motels and places to house their families, and restaurants, of course, the restaurant people are salivating.
Several years ago, Bob and I had pointed me on to committee, and we had this all the same thing, you know, emergency planning, and we had a meeting in Cambridge, and he said, neighbors in the transportation area in Washington, they were talking about if you had a tornado, and it was one that just hit Lucy Allen, that's how far it was, that big one they had down. And he said they were looking at Columbus, Cincinnati, Cleveland, he said Columbus is no problem. I said, oh, that problem. He said, you have a big storm in Columbus, I said, they're nice to go and come east, cause it's all current, he said, yeah. We said, what's the problem? I said, seventy-nine, we're across, it's seventy. I said, it floods, it, it blocks the rain, it's covered, and in eight, two thousand eighteen, there's money set aside there. But that's how long it takes to calm down again.
Of course, yeah, they were gonna clear up the riverbeds, everything, out heave, back I lake and all that, till they got about here, and then they were gonna stop there, and that, this is gonna be the bottleneck here for a while, so, I, hopefully that'll be remedied, but. So anyway, there are a lot of things, animals, I mean, you guys are into the, the dogs and things, but what do you do, I mean, when everybody's heading this way with their dogs and cats and their snakes, and they wanna stay, and people don't wanna, but just handling on a large scale, animal. Problems and stories. Take them to the pool, yeah. Um, under old business, the radios have been re-banded, which is something that was required by January, is that correct? Uh, so our walkies and mobile units and all that, our VHS and such was taken care of. Uh, the EMS software, you know, we've been dragging this out for a while, part of that was because I was carrying it around my briefcase, but it's just been a slow process, but that should be, uh, hopefully by next month, when we need to get, we'll be into that hot and heavy. And we have received the tough books. We bought two, we got a twenty-five hundred dollar EMS grant from the state division of EMS for equipment and such, and we took that twenty-five hundred dollars, those, those were twenty-nine hundred, seventy dollars a piece, whatever, but the, the twenty-five hundred dollars that we had went towards purchase of one of those, of those two units. I'm sorry?
And how many did you get?
We only bought two. And that gives us, of course, we currently have three, but one was damaged and it's still good, but we're gonna utilize, uh, one of the older ones with the software, so our fire inspectors can go out and, and do it electronically, and, you know, keep repairs and such. That, and then, we were talking weather, uh, the only other thing I've got is our weather sirens, and I mentioned this a while back, but the weather sirens, two must be re-banded or narrow-banded, and of course, they don't have the capability to do that, so it's gonna require a module be replaced in each of the six tornado sirens that we have. I've checked with BNC as well as Dave Skene, our radio guy, and the price tag on that varies anywhere from about six hundred and fifty dollars to about thirteen hundred dollars. If we had to totally replace, several options, I'm, the BNC is supposed to be sending me a copy of that, but just something that's gonna have to be done. To maintain that. Yeah. I mean, we, we have about three different options the way we go, but, so, and that's unfortunate, but that's just something the federal government has done with these radio frequencies. Really can't get echoes under unfunded mandates. Unfunded mandates again, yes.
Five there?
We have six. And other than that, any questions?
When's the date this has to be done on?
January of thirteen.
The narrow banding?
Yeah, the narrow banding.
January one.
Two thousand thirteen, next year, that's correct.
Is that, is that so they actually, you can hear the broadcast, I know it's in Columbus, months ago, and. I know it was in Columbus, uh, months ago and the sirens are setting up the panel, this wasn't what's going on. And then we're kinda like the emergency broadcast system through, through one of their sirens, is, is this what the narrowbanding will do? So you can get a verbal warning what's going on at the same time? Okay, no, nothing to do with that.
It's the free out airspace.
Free airspace.
They're gonna change.
Their airspace is full, I think, isn't it?
They're gonna change the, the siren to, it's gonna say, get off of the porch. My wife, but uh, but uh, no, this is something totally different with the, the radio frequencies and what, by narrowbanding.
Every, every radio frequency is twenty-five megahertz wide. You think of it like a pipe. The mandate is shrinking that in half. So uh, those radios become less efficient and um, and then in about another six to ten years, they're looking to narrow it even more. Because uh, there are so many electronic and wireless devices that the demand for radio frequencies is just.
Doesn't it create additional frequencies by narrowing it?
Yeah, when, when you narrow the, the, what the radio transmits and receives on, then it opens up new channels, uh, so to speak.
For, but once again, unfunded mandates.
Personal and aviation. Everybody that uses VHF has to narrow band.
So that is all I have.
Do we have any other questions for the chief? All right, go Jim at six o'clock.
Mark, did any of my guys talk to you about the training?
I put it out, but you.
I saw that, yeah. No, that's, that's fine, I just wanna make sure, if we're trying to do it on a local level.
Yeah.
Uh, you need to get the, Lynn to get legislation started on the chief, so.